Thank you all for coming out this evening. Wonderful turnout. We hope everybody's had a chance to take a look at the plans. Thanks to the friends of the Rockport Public Library, we have some nice refreshments here, so I don't mind if you get up and walk in front of me to come and get some at some point, so feel free to do that as we sit here this evening. The first thing we're gonna do this evening, actually the board has to do is looking ahead to the public comment section, I have written the agenda with some limits on public comment, and it's not up to me to do that, it's up to the board. So I just want some nods from the board. We come here this evening with the design team having worked since December on what you see around the room as far as preliminary concept plans. And I do want to stress that it is still preliminary at this point. The team has done a lot of work, and the team consists of Steve Smith's architecture firm, plus engineers from Gartley and Dorsky, landscape architects from Terry DeWan. The select board liaisons of the design team have been Doug Cole and Tom Gray. And, and when they haven't been able to go, I've sat in a couple of times, so I've had a little bit of experience with it as well. Anne Philly from the library committee has been there frequently. And Ben, our library director, and his staff. All of those people have contributed to what you see tonight. Basically, the goal was for the team to come up with a library for, as the select board motion said at the time, a budget of $3 billion, not including the parking. So that's where we are tonight. And basically, what we have tonight is, we're not going to talk about the budget tonight. That process is underway right now. We've hired Ledgewood Construction of Portland to be a construction manager. They are now looking at the same things that you're looking at this evening, along with some more technical drawings to work up precise estimates for us. And when those come back, then we'll need to deal with the budget. And some adjustments may be needed to be made then. But basically, what we want to do this evening is go through the plan. We'll have Steve and his team make some presentations this evening. And then the select board, which is basically the project manager at this point, may have some questions of Steve and his teams, and the library committee as well, to make sure that everybody really understands where we are right now. And then what we want to know from the public, from you, is are we on the right track or not? Are we going in the right direction? What do you like about the design? What do you really like about the design? If we end up having to make adjustments, what do you want to make sure we keep and things of that nature? So that's sort of what we're looking at tonight. As I say, we're not really going to talk a lot about the budget tonight. That will come with time. But right now, what we really want to do is, somebody made the metaphor, you know, we, we bought the land and now we're designing, we were just deciding what we want to have in the house, and we're looking at everything we'd like to have. And, and then we'll come back later and say, okay, well, maybe we have to make a couple of changes here and there, and things of that nature. But basically, what we want to do is really present the plan tonight, and then allow everybody to have a chance to say something about it and make a comment about it. And we will likely not engage the select board during that comment period. We're really going to be listening. The select board and the library committee mostly listening tonight to your comments. And then we'll have a week, we have another workshop scheduled for next Monday, at which we'll have time to respond to those comments at that time. So that's all I have to say to start with, and I'll invite Anne, the chair of the library committee, if she wishes to make any opening remarks to do so, and then we'll get into the presentations.
Thank you, Ken, and thanks for everybody for being here. One of the things I just wanted to mention is the library committee does support a new building, and does support this new building. But what we really wanted to make sure of is that we had some areas that we thought were very important. We want to make sure that this library is accessible. You know, talking about the parking, you know, is there room for people to move comfortably, the books? The second area really concerned the reduction in budget. And essentially, can the plan meet the needs of the people who use the library every day? You know, having a smaller budget, and I know you'll talk about it later and not at this meeting, it does take a lot of work and creativity. And we wanted to make sure that was part of the whole plan. The third area was that there's a space for programming. Either a larger room that could be changed to a programming room, or even a better room that was primarily designated for programs. You know, the idea of programming is not to move people out of the library, but to include them in. The fourth area concerned the ability for the library to expand. You know, as we know, the old building was expanded at least four times. Knowing that this new building can expand, even taking into consideration expands, expansion limits because of the size of the lot, that's so important. You know, we recognize that this plan is not set in stone, that there will be adjustments. But the creativity and the hard work that's gone into this plan so far, you know, we really applaud the work that's been completed and, you know, pleased to be part of it. So I just want to thank you. You know, we're looking at those things, and we're seeing a lot of those components coming to, coming together. So I think it's exciting.
Thank you, Anne. Okay, now we're going to go right to Steve Smith. And Steve will introduce the members of his team who will make their individual presentations and give some information about the various aspects of the, and again, stress preliminary concept plan as we have it right now. So Steve, the floor is yours.
Can you hear me? Yeah. I, I just want to thank Anne and Ben and Doug Cole and Tom Gray and, and all the people that, for the last two months, we've been meeting every week, sometimes twice a week, to develop the current drawings that you see in front of you. And our first assignment was to basically reduce a previous design that was 9,500 square feet down to approximately 77,000 square feet. A reduction of awful, almost 25, well, really 25% in order to meet the current budget. And as Ken mentioned, the drawings right now are, are in a construction manager's office being analyzed for every aspect of the costs. And so before we move any further after tonight, we, we need to wait and see where we are within that budget so we can make the adjustments in the plan. But before I get into the drawings, I'd like to just introduce you to Bill Lane, who's been working on this project with Will Gartley, who couldn't be here tonight. And then Keith Smith is the landscape architect on the project that has been working on the, the parking and intersection. So those two will address the site issues. And then Justin and I and Ben will talk about the building plans and the details of the actual building.
Thank you. If you want to go to the V for a second, Justin. So I'm Bill Lane, Rockport resident and engineer with Gartley and Dorsky, engineering and surveying. Will Gartley sends his apologies, he'd much rather be here tonight. And what Justin's putting up is a copy of the, the boundary survey prepared for both parcels showing the existing library, the park parcel divided from the library by Lime Rock Street, and the configuration of the brook adjacent to Mary Ann and Tom Young's property, which is the outlet of Lily Pond that traverses the southern portion of the library parcel, and then goes under Russell Avenue. And then also the intersection of Russell, Main, Union and Lime Rock, or Central, I should say, Central Street. And the location of the existing features there. And if you go to the C1, I would outline the proposed site, which does show the proposed 5,000 square foot footprint library building, which is further, the mass of the building is further away from the brook, but still utilizes that library parcel. And shows a reconfiguration of how Lime Rock enters Union, and creation of some additional green space to the southeast of the proposed building. Shorter crosswalk distances to traverse first Russell and then Lime Rock for pedestrian continuity through that downtown area. In addition, it depicts, while maintaining a two-way traffic pattern on Lime Rock Street itself, it depicts the addition of a drop-off lane in front of the, yep, thereabouts, with the big hand, in front of the library building. Access to the first floor of the library building, and ADA parking space on the property. And then further on up Lime Rock, to the left, 14 new parking spaces that are 90-degree parking. The expectation is that that would be better in preferential parking because access can be made from Central or Union Street to those 90-degree parking spaces and turn right back around and exit onto Union Street without continuing, as many folks do, up Lime Rock and through the quiet residential neighborhood connecting into Lime Rock and Hughes.
Bill, can I interrupt a minute? Just looking at that, that's an incredibly busy slide for people that aren't familiar with it. Justin, can you call up C2? Do you have access to C2? You know, I think it's a little easier for the uninitiated to look at this and, and see where the road actually comes out and the parking and everything, so I'm sorry.
Yeah, so this, this is a little more granular. Simply has the line work for existing travel way, proposed improvements, no contours, no trees, no utilities. So a simplistic visual. The maintenance of Lime Rock Street is depicted where it does narrow down, but still maintains two lanes at the intersection with Union Street. North of that intersection, there are parallel parking spaces, four of them designated along the length of the park, that are more distinctly separated off of the travel way than the existing curb line and parking lot, which is that dashed line. So those, we feel, are much more amenable to people getting off of the road and feeling safely off of the road, and will be more beneficial. And then the maintenance of three parallel parking spaces on, on Russell as well, to the south of the building. So it's, in effect, a net increase of parking and providing a configuration that allows us access and accessible access to both levels of the building, the first floor and the lower level. We would also make improvements adjacent to the brook to stabilize that presently failed retaining wall and stabilize that slope. Make utility connections. And hopefully make a better configuration for the power, which is, power and telephone are running through those developed areas fairly irregularly at this point. You can see that there is a maintenance of the pedestrian ways through the, through the park area and creation of, you know, distinct drop-off zone and a new separate ADA parking space and pedestrian crosswalk. That red hatched area would be a different surface treatment of the pavers for division of the, of the two lanes of Lime Rock Street from the drop-off lane, as well as a marked pedestrian boundary area, as opposed to just a striped crosswalk. Just a little more enhanced distinction between that and the regular travel way. As Steve had indicated, you know, there's a number of potential materials that will still be utilized in the final design development. So whether or not walks are concrete, or whether there's some pavers involved, will be determined as the, as the budget will permit as well, and pending some input from folks.
That one's, that one's fine. Good evening, Keith Smith. I'm the landscape architect from Terrance Swan Associates. What I'd like to, Bill went over a lot of great details. What I'd like to emphasize is just the exciting opportunities that this site has kind of lent to this project. First off, the park and the library, this has given the opportunity to bring both of those together. I think it's, you know, before they're separated, the connection through the park off of Union Street and to the front door of the library. You get to draw people through the park. It's, it's a great opportunity to kind of activate that park along with the other, with the library and other, you know, municipal spaces. Outside of that, the, the grading on the site, there's about 10 feet of elevation change from Russell Street to the back of the property. And again, this is another exciting opportunity for us because it's like the perfect elevation to have a two-story building. So down on Russell, you can have a lower access to the building. And then, once you go up Lime Rock and around to where the, the main entrance is, you know, that access to the upper. So it's a perfect elevation change. And because we have the two elevation chains, it also lends the opportunity for a lot of outdoor spaces. There's a walkway that leads from the front door around toward Russell, which, there's a patio that kind of overlooks Russell, so that's on the second story, where you would access the patio also from internally in the building. And as you go further around toward the back, there's going to be another outdoor patio space that, the, right outside the marine room, the, the main plaza. Yeah. A nice, big outdoor plaza, which will lend itself to outdoor gatherings, great use. You'll be able to hear the brook going by. We're going to be able to incorporate a little, some nice buffering along the stream. The idea is the use of some native plantings along there and kind of naturalize it. And then, once you lead further in that back corner of the property, where it's kind of, where it's white right now, that's going to be the opportunity to create some quiet spaces. You know, small spaces where you can have a couple seats and some reading, maybe some benches, so you can have some youth groups out there for discussions or any of that sort of outdoor quiet experience at the library, which is going to be really nice. And then the walkway will lead back out to the front as well. So in addition to that, like the spaces, the, one thing that's nice is the reconfiguration of the, of the Lime Rock intersection is actually going to generate more space, more usable outdoor space for the project as a whole in that lower corner, right in that. So essentially, by changing that intersection, that space is being created and can be outdoor green space. In an earlier concept plan, we had a small amphitheater there. So there's opportunity for some nice outdoor space. And the plantings, like I said, I think it's going to incorporate with some native plantings along the stream. There's lots of soft pockets throughout the site so that we're going to be able to soften the building and neatly integrate this library with the park and try to make it one cohesive space combined. One last thing is, you know, the reconfiguration also makes the sidewalk system from Central Street, you know, Union Street, Russell, it makes it safer pedestrian crossing-wise. And it gives everyone in the downtown, you know, pretty decent access to the library and feel safe about getting there. So that's about what I have for this.
Right on the same topic, though.
Quick question.
It's very, and it's only because you're, you're discussing the, you know, bringing the new plants in. Have you talked at all about what would be, what plants would be removed? Some of the larger trees that we have on the park? Kind of probably specifically on those parking spaces. Just, if we're talking about the landscaping, I want folks to have a good picture of what would also be probably removed under this plan.
Yeah, if we can go back to the C1, you kind of see the overprint of the edge of the new surface on it. There's, in particular, there's a 24-inch oak and a 36-inch oak below that point. Yep, that, right there, you're hovering over the 36 and that 24, and those are probably going to have to be removed. And there are smaller trees that are more recently planted that could probably be relocated. I believe that the most recent street tree planting could be salvaged and relocated within the park.
Thank you.
One name I forgot to mention in our previous comments was Rick Bates. He was instrumental in our, in our conversations and discussions, so.
Who?
I didn't mean to leave him out.
Oh, what's his name?
He's at all our meetings and keeping us on the straight now. In the design of the building, there was a number of, I would call, major concepts that we, we wanted to achieve. And first of all, it was the scale of the building within the neighborhood. And obviously, it's a very traditional, small New England village. And just for your information, the old footprint of the existing library is 3,400 square feet. This building is 5,000 square feet. So we basically increased the size by 1,500 square feet. And yet, the, the eve line and the roof ridge is slightly higher, but it's still a one-story structure. And by comparison, Tom Young's house and, and the Scott House properties, their, their roof line will remain higher than this building or very close to the existing roof line. So by having a one-story building and by keeping the footprint down, it's important that we kept the neighborhood scale and balance. And that was, that was critical to us. Second of all, as Keith mentioned, we have a 10-foot slope in the, in the site from the top of Lime Rock to Russell Ave. And what he mentioned, and it allows us to do, is we're basically building a foundation underneath that five square, 5,000 square foot footprint. And it gives us an additional area that is, it's not free space, but it's much. it's not free space, but it's much less expensive area than if you go build out and have more perimeter of the building. So part of this plan was to try to keep all the main functions on the library on the main level with the entrance off Lime Rock Street, and there's 5,000 square feet of that space that will be the daily function of the library. And then, at the lower level, you'll have those accessory-type areas that include mechanical room, bathrooms, staff workspaces, and the evening or off-hour use with a major program space, which is the major use of that lower level at this point. And it also allows us, as part of that foundation space, which is off to the right, 3,000 square feet of unfinished space, that if in the future, five, 10, 15 years from now, you need to expand, you have that space available. So the total finished area of this building is now budgeted for 7,000 square feet, of which the footprint's only 5,000. So it keeps it in scale. We think we've got a good plan economically by using that, what I call the lower level instead of a basement, and I think it will, we're hoping that the budget can support that, the finish of all that space, which I think we're going to be very close to that. Going back to the first floor, I'm going to let Ben get into the plans in a little bit, but some of the major spaces and concepts that we've developed on the first floors that try to provide a lot of natural lighting into that, into the library. As you know, the existing library and a lot of buildings don't have enough natural light, so in the winter, you're always turning on the lights, and it never has the same warmth that, when you get natural lighting. So we tried to provide tall windows in those spaces, so you can get light in over the stack areas. Ben has specified all the stack areas in the children's area, which is in the far right, are only four feet high, and then in the main, the main area, the fiction, nonfiction, those are only five feet high. So we should have good visual lines as well as good light in those spaces. One of the major attractions also in the main space is the marine room. That opens up onto that landscape terrace, so we think that it's, that's going to be a major draw for people using that room. Ben and his staff are off on the north side, near the main entrance, so that's, the immediate staff that's working there during the day have easy access to the circulation desk and also a small work area. Shifting down to the lower level, the whole main section of the lower level, it says staff area, that hadn't been fully developed, but it not only has backed files, but also work areas and whatever the staff needs, and that's a pretty flexible space. It can be expanded and changed to whatever needs that they have. So it doesn't have to have a lot of petitioning and a lot of cost associated with that. I'll let Ben fill in a little bit more on the plan, but that's basically the concept behind the design at this point.
So when we started the project again, and we had cut the budget by about a million dollars, I, as a librarian, I was very worried. But after working with the design team, the select board, it became very clear early on that nobody was looking at this project as something where we cut a quarter of the cost, we're going to cut a quarter of the size and call it good. Everybody was looking at ways to bring all of the programmatic aspects of our sort of ideal library design to just a smaller space. And that sort of settled me down, and I felt really good about it. And then, when Steve and I started working, we started looking at spaces, he showed me the first sort of design, there were things in it that I didn't think we were ever going to get, which blew my mind. I didn't even ask to sort of put that program reading room in, I assumed we were always going to be using this space for that. So having that was phenomenal, and the whole design I'm really happy with. So that's sort of my caveat or the opening statements, but to walk you through the design a little bit, you come through the main entryway and you're greeted. I mean, that's what we always wanted to do in our library, we want to be friendly, we want to be there for people. I mean, the library is just stuff, as it is if the people aren't there to sort of be there for you and help you out. So when you come through the main thing, the main entryways, there's going to be people there to help you, to direct you to whatever you need, and the way that it's structured is we actually have really good sightlines, too. So even though there's two stories here, we don't have to staff it any differently than we do right now, the level of staffing is completely adequate for this building. And then, we've done some sort of tricky things that are neat, that can allow our young adults and our children to sort of be a little louder, have a little space of their own, but still be completely supervised. So off to the side of the circulation desk, we've got our young adult room, and that's can be, the door can be shut to that, but there are windows that lead right into that, so we'll always have visual supervision from, you know, three sides. So, I mean, and that's good, that's good. I mean, you want people to, especially of that age, you want them to have that privacy and that area to sort of grow up in, but you want it to be safe, so you've got to be able to monitor it. And then the same going into the children's room, our children's librarian desks, our children's librarian's desk will be there, so we'll always have somebody in that space. But from the main desk, you'll almost be able to see straight through into that area, too, so there's almost two people that can cover that area. And for events in there, we can shut the doors, so the kids can really, like, have a good time without disturbing somebody who wants to be quiet somewhere else in the library. And the children's space I'm really happy about, because in this design, there's a little family area. And so the family area is for the adults. The kids come, they have a great time, but we've always sort of, in our children's space, we have short chairs and beanbags, and that's for the adults, too. So now we'll have some space for parents to sit at and enjoy themselves, as their children are also having a good time. I'm really excited about the sort of trifecta of the marine room, the tutoring room, and the program reading room in the basement, or the lower level. That allows me and the staff to do the type of programming we do now better, and opens us up for the future to come up with new types of programs and to expand what we already do. So I'm really pleased with that. A lot of the groups that use the library, that I've sort of showed this to, have said, oh, that's where we'll meet, that's where we'll meet, and they're very pleased with it. So I'm excited about that. There's a lot of diffused seating through the library, too, so there's a lot of places for people to sort of tuck away, have that quiet reading experience, study whatever they need, you know, we've got it set up for them. So I'm really pleased with that. I've got plenty of flexible space for staff downstairs and upstairs, so I'm really happy with that. I like the way the staffing is set near the circ desk, so that there's always somebody there that can back up anything that comes up. I'm just really pleased with the plan as a whole, to be honest. And again, when I started, I was a little surprised, I've workshopped it with the staff multiple times, we're really pleased with it, you know, it's ADA compliant, we've got plenty of room for people to move around and be comfortable, and we think, we think it's going to work really well. And I can get into the real weeds and the details with anybody at any time at the library, you know, because we've already gone over things like linear shelf feet, like, is the collection going to fit, is there going to be room to grow the collection? And the answer to all of those questions have been yes, so that's where we're at with the plan, and you know, we want to hear from everybody, too, to see, you know, if we've forgotten something.
Wait, there still are going to be beanbags, though, right?
Oh, there's still going to be plenty of beanbags, yes.
I like the beanbags.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have beanbags.
Ken, if I might, I don't mean to be rude by with the phone, but somebody had messaged me saying that there was an audio talkover and they couldn't hear anything.
Oh.
So that's what I was trying to get to Rick to get over there, so.
Okay.
Didn't mean to be rude.
Okay.
Okay, Steve, are you?
We're open for questions or discussion.
So for this section of the meeting, this will be, then basically, the conversation with the select board and the library committee to ask Steve or any of the team questions about what they presented to us tonight, and in an effort to flesh out, so we have as much information as possible, as the select board, we're kind of the managers of the project, so I'll open it up to the board to ask any questions of these guys that you like.
Can I ask a first question of potentially an agenda change? Because I got to say, when I hear folks talk, it tickles what I want to ask you all about, and I don't know, I mean, it would be great to hear from folks after we ask questions, but I bet they've got a lot of things that would be interesting to hear first.
Well, I think the plan, the way I set the agenda up was so that we could get the questions that we want answered, and hopefully, we'll answer a lot of what the folks want to have, and then we'll have some comments from them, so I'd like to stick with it as we have it right now.
Sure.
So, anybody have any questions of the professionals here?
Gets back to my original point about the drawing, it was very complicated, and I'm still not entirely convinced that the members of the general audience, who may not have seen this before, really understand easily where Lime Rock comes in, where Russell comes in, where the new knob comes off the end of the building there. Is it clear to people in the audience now, do you understand the new traffic flow?
What is the red there? I don't understand that.
That's the, it's the crosswalk that would be a different texture to have it stand out as.
It's a sidewalk, rubberized or something like that.
Right, I think probably a brick look, red brick look.
There's a lot of opportunities there. We'd be balancing, you know, the intention to make it stand out and be distinctive with, you know, what makes the best effect for cost, but stamped asphalt, or brick paver, or concrete paver, those are some conventional materials. Same gradient, yeah. So you can drive over, for example, if somebody pulls into the turnoff lane there, and somebody stopped ahead of them, they need to get out, they can swing around them, they can drive over, it's just a pavement marking. It's not, it's not grade separated. Right. Actually, one thing I'd like to talk about, or have you guys talk about a little bit, is the outdoor patios, and maybe you can see them well on the elevations, I think. If you could sort of just quickly maybe run around the elevations, like, see where the people are there, and sort of relate that to how that works for the building, that would be helpful, I think.
Keith can expand on that, but personally, I think it's going to be a major space that the public's going to use in the summer, and it faces southwest, it looks down towards the harbor, and it'd be a wonderful area on nice days to sit out there and read or have events. And it hadn't been fully developed, and Keith can talk about a little bit of how that is going to be configured.
Yeah, a little more detail. So the one that says landscape terrace, right there is mine.
You had it on there, there you go.
So, as we, as we mentioned before, there'll be direct access to that from the building and/or from around the building, both in the quiet back corner and from Lime Rock, all on the same accessible level. Do you want to show the, so, yeah, just follow that path around. So from the Lime Rock entry, you would be able to follow that path all the way around, and then be able to access the landscape terrace in the back, and/or come through the building and access the terrace through the exterior doors there. And as I alluded, also to the, in the upper right, the patio can go back to where the quiet space is in the back corner. So again, the materials are yet to be determined, you know, ideally, it blends in nice with the main landscape, and then, the edges are softened with plantings. The final plan will have, you know, outdoor seating, maybe some additional planting beds within there, we can envision some planting pots and stuff, so that you can really create a nice outdoor seating space and activity space.
And just so everyone knows, the outside perimeter of this, it hasn't been, you know, Keith hasn't defined it yet.
Yeah.
Budget also will define it. This is just graphically to show the space that that's where it would be located.
Yeah, one, one of the things we are looking at is from, from the Russell Ave side, is having an access, an informal stairway that leads up to the terrace from that side as well.
Is the terrace on the same level as the main level of the library?
Correct.
Okay.
And.
Covered patio. Stuff's right there.
Okay, that's it. The stairs will go down.
And, and there is also a small, small outdoor space on Russell, if you want to.
Right there.
On the lower level. It's a much smaller space, you know, it's kind of more of a public entryway than an outdoor seating area, but, you know, it will give you a space to kind of transition from the streetscape to, to the building. That'll be a nice transition.
The rain out.
Yeah. And just as a sort of reminder, we had a space very similar to that in the old building, but it's more of sort of a step down into a gravel pit that we had landscaped, that there was a picnic table in and some seating, and people used it. I mean, it wasn't that appealing, and people used it all the time when it was sunny out or it was nice. So having something like this, I think, really will be a draw. I think you'll see people sitting there all the time, whether they come into the library or not, or they're just using the internet, but people will want to sit outside.
Any other questions from the board?
I do, but I think Steve, you wanted to say.
Oh, no, I, apologies, growing up in the Joni Mitchell age and parking and those things, and also, there was a woman here at one meeting that, who discussed parking and the fact that she couldn't use the building. I guess my concern, and I'll tie the questions all into one, is the comparison of the number of spaces that there will be after and versus now, and also, being someone who needs those, that ADA handicap space at this point in my life, and I'm one of many, it sounded like you said there was just one on the Lime Rock Street, but then I think there, are there more on the Russell Avenue? And Anne did tell me there's an elevator, I've been kind of out of the picture for a while. The other piece that came to my mind was that during the process between the vote and deciding what to do with the library, there was talk, which didn't make a whole lot of sense necessarily, but to totally separate the street stuff from DOT and all of those things, and that the library itself, that was going to be the simple, not simple, but that was going to be the single project. So I guess I'm thinking about funding, maybe I'm ahead of myself with the funding, but that the $3 million, or the bond, will simply be for the library building itself. It will not be for parking, it will not be for the street stuff, is that correct?
That's correct, and I can add to that very briefly, because I don't want to get too deep into the budget.
Right, I didn't either, but.
But we have, the team has met with main DOT, there's a funding possibility of the state, a very strong funding possibility, that they may help us with, for the state portion, because the road goes through, there is a state road, they may help us with 80% of the funding for that, we have some TIF money as well. So we have a plan right now that we'll actually get a good deal for the taxpayers in reconfiguring this intersection, and so they, sort of are two separate projects, but obviously, we're hoping that they go together.
Can Steve or somebody give me those numbers on parking spots now, parking spots then, and also the ADA? I, my vision isn't the greatest to count, either.
So the proposal is for 15 spaces on Lime Rock, which includes the ADA space.
There's more than one, though, Bill, across, right? The, the, the Union Street is at the same elevation at the entry, right?
Yeah. The, the Union Street, parallel spaces are four spaces, I don't believe that any of them have been designated as ADA, but it's.
They're not technically ADA, but they're accessible, they're at the same level, so.
Same elevation, yeah.
And to be ADA, it's the amount of distance from the parking spot to the entry, and so.
I think.
From an ADA standpoint, this is the ADA spot, but then, these are accessible spots that are better than, you know, say, just a general parking spot in.
Yeah, for, for a space to be.
And it's on Union.
Yeah, and then these spots are right here at grade.
Yeah, there's, there's four on Union, then there's also three on Russell. Yes.
Do you have the, do you have the draw, the, the print that has the color, the project divided into the three? There you go.
B1, that's good.
That's the one.
Bill, explain that.
So the purpose of that drawing is to kind of depict the intended different projects within the work that we completed. The gray shaded area would be area that would be subject to review by MDOT and hopefully substantial cost participation under the MPI program. That is because Union Street is a state road, state aid road. The blue parking is depicted as part of. The blue parking is depicted as part of the Public Works effort. And then the magenta or pink shaded area would be the site work associated with the library bond.
If I can follow up on that, the gray area, that's the, the piece that's depicted in gray, we're meeting with DOT again on the sixth of March. And that, that has an eighty-twenty split between the state paying eighty percent and the town paying twenty percent of that piece. So basically, you know, we've got eighty cents on the dollar for that work. And that work on that intersection, irregardless of the, the library, it, it's a good idea for us to be looking at, at that period, to just clean up that intersection. So it will make the intersection much better. It will narrow up the entrances. We actually pick up, we don't lose as much of the park as you, as it looks, because we pick up more green space. But we eliminate that sea of asphalt that when you come off Russell, you come off Lime Rock, you come off all those spaces, you eliminate that sea of asphalt and you create more green space. But the gray area, one of the challenges in working with DOT is trying to define it and pull it out of the library project. It can't be, it has to be totally separate, or else DOT, they'll have trouble following it. So we're, we've, we've totally separated it out. The budget that we're, that I presented to the board has money built in to cover the cost of the, our twenty percent there by using TIF money. And also, the budget that I presented has in it enough money to do the road, the, the blue areas, is that blue or green, whatever color that is, area. And that's in the current budget. So it takes-
I want to make it clear, Rick is talking about the annual municipal budget, not elaborate.
Right, right, yeah, no, I-
Exactly.
I want to make sure everybody understands.
So what we're talking about for the three million is in the area that's in the pink or magenta color.
And Steve, if I could go back and talk to Steve again about the parking issue, because I asked some of the same questions you did. You know, can we get more than one ADA spot? And I think Will was at that meeting and he explained, explained what Bill just talked about, is that those parallel spots on Union Street technically can't be designated as ADA because they're, they don't meet the requirements for whatever. But it is near, the grade is nearly flat across that sidewalk, across the park and leading over into the library. So they are nice parking spots. So that's, that's something that's helpful, and the spots that are down at the, at the lower end of the, of Lime Rock parking as well.
Yeah, because I was thinking of getting wheelchairs and things like that.
Bill, could you address the, the drop-off area? Because I think that sort of dovetails in with Stephanie's question, because we do have a, an area where you can pull right up to the front door, I think.
Yes, where, where Justin is indicating now is going to be available for vehicles to pull off, assist someone out of a vehicle, put the car in park, turn the car off, walk them into the building if they need to. And as, as been, has been expressed, if a second car comes in and queues up at that location, it's out of the travel way of Lime Rock Street. It's at moderate and modest grades that are going to allow somebody who is differently able to get out of a car and walk or be wheeled into the library. And then it's also in close proximity to the one designated ADA space, which is compliant, which means it's got enough width, it's got enough gradient across it, and not too much gradient across it, and be indicated with lines and signs so that it's an acceptable ADA space.
Is that space also capable of having a van with a ramp?
Yeah, the first, the first ADA space in any design has to be a universal space, which means it's van compliant.
Great, thank you.
Cheryl had a question.
A couple of questions about the programming space on the lower level. How many people could it seat for an event? And given whatever that number is, what portion of the programming events that the current, the library currently hosts could be hosted in that space? And also, would it be possible to host evening events in that space without opening the entire library? I'm a little bit concerned that maybe the answer is no, because of the situation with the layout of the bathrooms and things like that downstairs, but I don't know.
Sounds like a question for Ben.
Yep, I can answer those. So Steve will have to correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we can seat forty people in that lower room on chairs with enough room for a presenter and a projector and, and the whole, the whole spiel that we might need. And then, yeah, we could separate the upstairs and the downstairs space for after-hours events. We could lock the stairway going up and let people just come in the downstairs way or go back out the upstairs way. If we needed, sort of if there was an ADA issue, we could take somebody up the elevator and take them out the front door. That's not a problem. I mean, we're very accommodating when it comes to whatever somebody needs. I mean, our sort of motto is we're going to meet you where you are to get you what you need. So the percentage of events that we would do there over what we do here now, depending on the month, I'd say we, we do two events a month here. Sometimes we do four, sometimes we do less. And I would say almost ninety percent of those we could do in the library as opposed to in this room. We'll still sometimes want to use this room for bigger events, use the upstairs, you know, the big auditorium for really big events that we do. But we'll be able to do a lot of our events in the library, which is great for us for a lot of reasons, to bring people in the library, all the peripheral reasons that you want to do events in the library or to bring people in to say, oh, hey, you've got this, you've got that, and then we can like add service to those experiences. Yeah, I think, I mean, we're-
And there's two bathrooms.
Oh, yeah, and there's two bathrooms downstairs that are available for people. Yeah, I mean, does that, does that answer most of it? I mean, we're excited about the space and the way we'll be able to do things. And it'll free up more meeting space in the town by opening this room up. I mean, right now, in order for us to do our job and program events, we have this room on hold twice a month. And, you know, we don't always use it, sometimes other people use it if we're not going to do things. But we have to have it that way so we can plan things two or three months out in advance.
I, I just want to add one thing, that lower level space was programmed the same size as the original design, which is eight hundred square feet, and it will accommodate more than forty people. It's slightly smaller than this room, but the, also the stack, the back file area wall is, is not fixed. And if you get closer to the construction of the building and you wanted to increase that space by a little bit, you could easily do that. So you've got a lot of flexibility there, but it definitely will accommodate more than forty people.
Steve, quick question, with Cheryl asked. That lower level right there, that can be completely isolated from the rest of the library if we want to, right?
Correct, at nighttime, sure.
At nighttime, if we have a program.
Right, it's ADA accessible from the lower level.
Okay, Cheryl.
Anything else from the board, Owen?
So, I love the unfinished space. It's good potential, it keeps us within budgetary constraints. I love that creative thinking. The question that I have is also about any other future expansion possibilities that exist on this site. And as a non-architect, non-landscape architect, the only thing I was kind of seeing was above that, north of the young adult and the children's and that Tudor study area, is that a rectangle that could potentially be grabbed later on? I don't know about the setbacks from the Scott property or insanity, because that's a huge, you would have to come down to full story to get down to the bottom.
Well, actually, the other expansion option, which we haven't addressed at this point, is if you wanted to develop the upper level. And on the patio elevation, we've shown two dormers there. And you can take part of that space and use that in the future by expanding the stairway to the third floor and making that accessible up there. We haven't had that ability for our budget, and we don't anticipate it, but structurally, it could be set up that, that would be another area that you could utilize.
Do we know anything about whether or not there are significant ledge issues on this property that might make it incredibly amazingly expensive to put in this foundation?
Sounds like a good question.
There, there were core borings done on the entire site, and the ledge is very deep as far as it's not, it's not near the surface at all. So the foundation, other than in a small area next to the Scott property, would be easy access and excavation. There, there, they did a complete soils boring test all around that foundation.
Let, let's just be clear, because you look at the site and you think, that site is one giant rock, but that's not true.
No.
Okay.
Anyone else, questions?
We, we looked at that with the Reed.
Go ahead, Stevie.
Sorry about that. I had one more question, and I'll, I'm going to do this to Ben because I haven't seen him lately. I haven't gotten out much lately. When you talk about, and Steve addressed the shelf height, which is also a concern of mine for kids and other challenged people. I guess I'm, I'm trying to process the, and I know we're not supposed to talk square footage and size and all of that, but I'm trying to process how we can have reduced this space so much. We had careful studies that we had done, that you had done as library director from AD, from the American Library Association in terms of space and size requirements. And I guess I'm kind of wondering how we can have this overall reduction that we have and still maintain the space that we had determined was needed to be ideal, I guess. Maybe that's the can't answer, that, so maybe we drop from ideal to acceptable or something.
Well, I mean, I can, I can hopefully answer that for you in a couple of different ways. I mean, yeah, we, we had to reduce things from the Reed design. That was, that was just, that's part of the, the plan. You know, we, four million was too much, so we had to, we had to drop that back. Coming through and working with Steve, again, like I was worried about the same things you were, that programmatically, we were going to lose all this space and we were just going to cut everything. But that's not the way everybody came at it. They sort of went, how do we still pack these things in? What do we do with adjacencies? How do we work in the space? And some of that is by not finishing to like, you know, the gold standard, that staff space. You know, because then we don't need it, you know, we would rather spend that money on the citizens of Rockport. You know, we don't need cushy things, we want to make it nice for you. So that was one way we did it. We did look at sort of the linear shelf feet. So the collection right now fits with room to grow in every section of the library. We haven't sort of mapped out, like, when you see it right now, we haven't mapped out like the large prints here or the audiobooks are here yet. We will get to that at some point, so then you can see like where things are and, and how you would get to it. But we will lower the shelves by, I mean, in, in the new library, I mean, the current library, that whole top shelf won't be there anywhere, which is good. And this is just laid out better than anything we've been in before. And that goes a long way to making space work efficiently. So, I mean, I hope that works for you as far as how we got there. I mean, I'm, I'm really happy with this, to be honest. I was nervous, but I'm really happy with how this is laid out, how everything's going to fit, how we're going to program things, how people are going to flow around the spaces, and how we're going to be there to help them.
Okay.
All right?
Thanks, Ben.
Yeah.
Anything else from the board or from the library committee? If not, it's time for everybody else. We are going to put a two-minute limit per person on it, and I have my little device up here that'll play a nice little ditty when you get to two minutes. So we won't yank the rug right out from under you, if you get the idea that you have to wrap it up. We will ask you to identify yourself, and we will ask you to come to the podium as well, so that those at home can hear or those reviewing the meeting later can hear it. And if you can be brief, and if somebody else says something that you really agree with, feel free to come on up and say, I agree with so-and-so, and, and that, that doubles the comment, so to speak. And what we really want to hear is, now that you've had a chance, hopefully, to look at the, the drawings when you came in this evening and to hear the presentations, what we really want to hear is whether you think we are on the right track or not. What do you like about this design? What do you really like about this design? If we have to start making some adjustments for budget reasons, what do you want to make sure we keep? And any other comments, it's wide open, but we're really looking to hear from-
Is there anything we've missed?
Yeah, anything like that. And what's important about tonight is, as I mentioned at the outset, right now, everything that you see and more is in the hands of the construction manager who are doing detailed estimating. So we're at a stage now where if we hear something that's widespread from a comment, we can go back to Steve and, and, and make an adjustment. And that's, that's the way the process is supposed to work. It's your library, so we really want to hear from you. So, anybody who wishes to make comment, well, feel free to come up. I'm going to start because there was, I think Alex was here for a while, I said it in the lead earlier, but Alex Armitrout left some notes for me, and I said I would read them into the record, so I will do that. And in the meantime, anybody else can come on up and queue up to make a comment. Alex said, and I'm reading his words here, "After much debate, for a second time, a site has been selected for a new Rockport library. For a second time, an architect has been selected. The architect has been tasked with designing a building to a budget stipulated by the select board. We're talking about a new library, it's an important building for the town, thus when finished, it should have a certain stature." He puts that in quotation marks. "It should stand out as an important building in the town, it should set itself apart architecturally from the homes of individual residents. On the question of exterior finish, there are already two major brick-faced buildings just down the street from the planned library, so brick facing on this building, in addition to making it more important," he puts that in quotes, "is not out of place. All municipal buildings in Rockport are brick-faced, there is no reason this one should be any different. Brick is much less expensive over the long term, so it's a good investment for the town." So that's a, a comment from Alex Armitrout that he asked me to read into the record. Does anybody else wish to come up and make a comment and tell us what you think about this, how we're going about it, and, and what you like about it, and whatever? So, just come on up and line up unless, Terry, do we have a portable mic at all? It might be easier for some folks who have a little trouble getting up here, but we do have-
I could shout, I'd rather shout.
Well, we'd actually rather have you come up, but the problem is the live stream, because the folks at home won't be able to hear you if you shout. We'll hear you, but the folks won't be able to hear you. You're on.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Owens Davis, and I have the pleasure of being the butter to the park. And I'm feeling more than slightly overwhelmed at the thought of twenty-eight headlights coming right into my bedroom and living space. I feel really invaded, like there's an army there. It looks like there's a sidewalk in front of the parking space, and I don't see any barrier or any planting or any real good space for that. And would like to know what consideration will be given, since it only affects one taxpayer, but it's a pretty profound effect on my life. Because this parking will be used by the Opera House and the folks at Eighteenth Central. And it just feels really overwhelming to me, so. I don't think you could answer that right now, but I would love to be able to-
Well, I'll give a little, maybe a brief chat, a brief crack at that one.
Yeah, we, we haven't gotten into detailed landscaping yet, but any information like that is helpful. So when we get into that, we can build in some buffering and some evergreen planting and such that may help with that.
Just the lighting, and also, I'd be curious about the, what lighting is going to be required for those parking, what lighting will be required at those parking places? Because now they've put a light on that flagpole in the park, and that's like a full moon shining in my bedroom window every night just from those little lights. I'm not sure if you thought that was a good idea, but. So I'd be concerned about what lighting requirements there will be. So, and I'd be happy to meet with you independently, just to-
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else? Come on up.
I'm Tom Young, and I live next door. I like the plan, Steve. I talked to him about the bricks. I'm not wild about the bricks. I'm not, I disagree with Alex. I don't, I don't think we need a municipal-looking building there. But I like the plan well enough. I can live with it if I have to. But anyway, if you've got to cut the budget somewhere, there's probably a couple hundred thousand there that you could nick, nick off it. I'm also wondering, I like the way the, everything is laid out, the street. I'd love to see the traffic slowed down there. I've been watching it for twenty years, and it's a crazy place. Is it possible that somebody could mark those bump outs and things with some sort of paint so we can get an idea of what it, what we're talking about in reality? You know, where, where the change is on, is that, is that okay with the DOT?
Bill? We should be able to do that.
You know, I'd just like to see where that stuff comes out, and, and get an idea. Because I, I really like that, I think it'll work well.
What do they call it, urban, urban, I hate to use that word. There's a name for that, when you mark things out, and to see how people, how it looks and how people feel about it.
And you chased it right out of me.
Good thought. Okay, anybody else?
Richard?
I'm getting comments from people to make sure that you speak into the microphone, people out...
Sure, except I shout just by default, so I will try to not shout.
Currently, there's 30 people watching, one from California, actually.
That's fine, I have friends and enemies everywhere.
You don't need to yell loud enough, so she can hear you in California.
So, I'm Richard Shideroff, often referred to as "What's Left of Richard." I live at, at number five Church Street. And, and my first question, what's my time limitation?
Two minutes.
Two minutes, all right, so many questions, and a few comments.
You're down to a minute and a half, Richard, so...
Okay, yeah. American Standard Parking Space is about 330 square feet. Is that, is that in conformation with your, with your proposed parking space layout?
It's a nine by 18.
Nine by 18. The cost of a parking space, to put it underground, even in big cities, is not that much more than the cost of having an outdoor, you know, exposed to the weather kind of, kind of a parking space that you would then need to light, with mostly annoying kinds of exterior lighting. I'm very, even though I've been in and out of lighting all my life, not a certified lighting designer, but I know quite a lot about it, and I hate outdoor lighting, as it's being practiced currently. So, I wonder if anyone has costed out what it would, what it would cost, this is imagining, there's no limit on the budget, this is called brainstorming. Who has costed out what it would take to, dollar-wise, to put those parking spaces under the common? It's trivial to dig a hole, even in rock, with dynamite, and then simply put whatever you want underground, and then, and then purchase some pre-cast concrete to, to cover it with, and put your lawn back on top, which would, it's not a great amount of square footage, but it would change the heat map of the common. So, you may want to think about how the heat map downstairs, down, downtown here is... I see John chuckling. I will try to make this brief, but, and I have about 101 of these sorts of concerns. The other concern is with regard to the children's quiet area, is that going to be at least double or triple glazed glass? And will the walls be constructed in such way that they're non-conducting, with non-common joists, sorry, yes, studs between the inside, where the children will be having a good time, and the outside, where us old people won't be having such a good time? And, and that's where I guess I'll, I'll cut it off. Otherwise, except for the fact that there are no columns, and it could be a little more H.H. Richardson, you know, you could work some sandstone into this somewhere. I approve of brick, and I'm very happy to see that no one's trying to do a Frank Lloyd Wrong treatment by giving these, by giving these proposals flat roofs, because we don't really know what the future winters are gonna be like.
Thank you very much.
Can I give him my two minutes?
Anybody else wanna make, have a crack at the microphone? Come on up.
Thank you, everybody, for all the work. I think it's very exciting, so thank you very much. Just really quickly, what wasn't clear to me was, what is the inside ceiling treatment on that first floor? Is that gonna be sort of open gable space? Is it gonna be hung ceiling? What is the thoughts there? And, and thinking down the road, if, if, assuming that this is able to be built, and maybe at some point want to consider putting solar onto the roof, if there's interest in doing that down the road, when money may get raised, I would think that not having dormers on that roof would make it easier to consider that option down the road. Thank you.
If you wanna address that, Steve, good point.
Stephanie, the ceiling heights haven't been determined at this point. They've been just budgeted initially for acoustic tile, but there are certain areas that could be vaulted in that space, and, and those will, decisions will be made when we get the budget back. But, Justin has some information regarding the solar application, and you're right, that, that roof over that main area would not have dormers on it if we, we go to a solar application. But this building, I believe, siding-wise and, and roof configuration is ideal for solar, but...
Initially, we had a consultant in Portland that does solar studies, now look at the roof that's over the children's area, but then also over the fiction, non-fiction. And for the latitude that we're in, it is efficient at the, it's a 90, in the 90 percentile for efficiency at this latitude. But we would have to defer, just like a, any other engineer, we'd have them do a study and take off, and tell us where we, our panels would be best located, and whether dormers or no dormers would be best suited to achieve whatever kilowatt application we want. But that's something that can be studied.
And the roof, the standing seam? But we, it's proposed that it would be a standing seam metal roof, which is the optimal to join solar to. Proposed.
Anybody else wish to make a comment? Please come on up to the mic, or come on up and cue up, if you will.
Good to be here, I'm glad we're all having this conversation. I'm Peter Ralston, live up on Camden Street, and my wife Terry and I own what will forever be known as "The Corner Shop," but is now our gallery. We're the squatters. So, we spent a lot of time in the village, you know, throughout Rockport, but a lot of time in the village. And my comment, I like the plan, I like the plan a lot. I think you're hearing some good input, particularly from the neighbors, who are gonna be living with this, living with this all the time, you know? The lights and the parking and so forth and so on. The, the thing I wanna specifically comment upon, and I've been hearing a lot of this from other people, and I feel this way, is the, the bit about the brick. I, I don't agree with Alex on this, I'm with you, Tom, and you live right next door. I would hope that we might see, I hope there's real discussion, consideration of either clabbered, maybe shingles, we all know in the long run, how the expenses work and so forth and so on. But this is a neighborhood. I abut, our back field abuts Town Hall, and with all due respect to Town Hall, which I love, we're in there all the time, that is a municipal building. This isn't, where the library is, though, it's a neighborhood. And I think it's a big, big aesthetic difference. Clabbered, love to see it, shingles, love to see it. I think the brick, unless you go and you buy old brick, sure, we've got Union Hall, we've got Shepherd Black, that's old brick, and to do what Matt Simmons was able to do at The Strand, for instance, old brick, to make it look old, to look like it's been there, to look like part of town, that's not gonna happen with this brick, I mean, that's just crazy money. So I... I'm sorry?
Wait a hundred years.
Yeah, or spend, spend a lot more money to make it look like it's been there, like it's part of the village. So, my bit, I think I've made my point, is I'd, I'd sure love to see, the, the plan would, I think, be all the better for another face material.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Let me just respond to one comment. I, I won't get into the debate on brick and, and clabbered, but just to correct Peter, we have specified a restoration brick, which is the old brick, and it matches the same color as the Shepherd's block, and it also has a slightly different size to it. So, we've even gone down to specifying the joint, which is a grapevine joint, it's been done 100 years ago. So, actually, the veneer of this building, and the size of the brick, and the mortar joint will be very similar, if not exactly like the Union Hall and Shepherd Block. So, it's not like the brick on the town office, which is a waterstruck brick, got a different look and different size and configuration, so.
My name is Bill Ferlich, and it gives me great pleasure this evening to come to you without any complaints, and to contract, congratulate all of you for the very positive way in which you have taken the bull by the horns and are moving constructively forward, so that we have a real opportunity for a wonderful new library. Again, congratulations.
Sally Cook, I live in the village. First of all, I love this design. It's appealing, welcoming, and it makes a wonderful flow and connection between... The design itself makes a flow from Central Street across the Opera House to the park, and it sort of connects things. I, I think the building is wonderful. In terms of brick, two issues. The cost, as I understand it, over the years, in terms of maintenance and painting and upkeep, the brick would actually save money after a period of time, because it would need less maintenance. The other thing about the brick, and about building longevity and durability, the Shepherd Building and Union Hall are well over 100 years old. One reason there's been all this recent problem about the library there is that it is clabbered, and it started deteriorating maybe 20, 25 years ago. And, and maintenance has always been a problem, and it's maybe 50, a bit more than 50 years old now, and a tear down. Brick would still be there 100 years from now, and more, and I hope that's what we're building.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Dr. Ralph Wallace. If I'm not the newest resident in Rockport, I'm close to it, we've only been here for three months, but...
Don't know what you've missed.
Well, I kinda do, because we own summer property here. And I've been following this for the last several years. We live in the village, we're only a couple minutes away from this proposed building. And although I think that, I think that property taxes in this town are a bit steep, but, and I, I know that we're gonna, we're gonna enjoy the headlights and the parking situation that's gonna be in front of our house. But, having said that, with a background in this field and understanding education pretty well, I think a quality library is part of a quality town. And, given that you're gonna do the best you can with the old brick and all that, I, I fully support this, this structure, I think it's great.
We have a question from our TV audience out there, and I think it probably ought to go to Steve. We have a watcher that asks, "Is there wall space for displaying artwork, including special exhibition and/or children's artwork?"
And the question is what? Oh, is there a wall space?
Is there wall space for artwork, and just, you know, notifications, artwork, whatnot?
The, one area at the lower level is a, and the reason that wall is circular was, in fact, it was gonna be a gallery space that would be utilized for artwork and whatever else the Ben and the library thought was appropriate. And at the upper level, there's a small area, obviously, on the backside of the elevator, coming in for informational, and, and a space to the right of that, which would also, could be used for display. But, a lot of that detail, we will get into when, in fact, we start developing the interior of the, of the library after the budget comes in.
And one other question from the TV audience, they would like to know what the capacity of the marine room is.
We've provided seating along the curved wall that faces the landscape patio, but the question, and a table in the middle of the room. So, it, again, that's up to Ben to determine how large the collection is, and how much seating he wants in that space. But it's, it's big enough to, I think, already accommodate around 10 people.
Anything else from TV land out there?
I'll watch it, keep an eye on it.
Helen Shaw, from Pascal Avenue. I actually had a question about the marine room. The one in the older building had the table in the middle, which meant it was very difficult to hold meetings where you had a presenter. But, the group that I host, once a month on Wednesday evenings, anywhere from four to a dozen people. And would we be put in that, or would we have access to the one on the, on the ground floor?
We, depending on your meetings, because we're real fluid with wherever you wanna go, if you had just a few people and you wanted to meet around the table, we'd probably put you upstairs. But if you were bringing in a presenter for the genealogy, and you wanted to go downstairs, we'd just put you downstairs.
Okay, and, and you mentioned genealogy, Wednesday night, six o'clock. BJ Jamison's coming in from Belfast, tell us about her collections.
Oh, here was a real quick thing, because we haven't touched on it tonight, but the space for the Friends, and access to space on the lower level for the Friends and their collection, if someone wanted to maybe expand on that a little bit?
Yeah, I can, I can do that. So, that unfinished space, that 3,000 square feet of unfinished space, right now, we're envisioning that as where the Friends would do all the book sorting and storage of books for the annual book sale, until we needed to move into that space. They could bring, I mean, all the books that get donated to the library, we could just take straight down there with the elevator, and get them moved in there. It's very similar to the space that they're using right now, under Vision Builders. I mean, it's just a concrete box that they're in right now, so, it's not like they need anything better. I mean, it's just a bunch of books that we're putting in boxes. So, we could provide a lot of stuff to do that for them. And because we'd be there, we could help do some of that work, and we'd have them in the library, and we'd have that vibrancy that they bring to the building.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Questions, comments, tell us what you like, tell us what you really like. Tell us what you might like differently, whatever.
Megan Ollie, Mount Pleasant Road, West Rockport. Personally, I don't like the location, and I've already made my views known, so I won't go on and on about that. But, I think that we have other places within Rockport that can suit the entire community, not just the harbor. I think that some other locations might be better for chances for expansion, certainly a greater possibility of having more than one ADA parking space. And having been temporarily handicapped for about four months of my life, I can appreciate how hard it is to get out of a parking space, when you don't look like you're disabled, but you really have a hard time. And the four spaces that are in front, that you say, "But it's easier for..." Well, if I'm an able-bodied person, I don't necessarily think about the person who just came off crutches and really has a hard time walking across the street, or, or little kids, or just all those things that you don't think about when, until you're in that space. If that is completely off the table, and I, I am stuck paying taxes on a building, I really don't like the location, because I think it's just not for the whole community. Personally, I don't care whether it's brick or clabbered. I lived in a brick house, I can tell you the maintenance is next to zero, and I like no maintenance. And you can get all different kinds of brick, and it doesn't necessarily cost a whole lot more, so that might be something. The other thing that I also had a question about was in the, the rooms downstairs, where you have the three different rooms, and I was wondering, is there some kind of way that you can have the walls be flexible? So if you have, like, an overflow crowd, you can take away one of the walls and, and create a bigger space? Or what's, what's the plan for that? And I'll sit down.
Yeah, so, so for the program reading room, you know...
Yeah, so, so for the program reading room, you know, if we get to a point where we decide that we make it, want to make it bigger, that wall can move. But the idea is if we're going to do something that we're going to have to have, like, overflow space, we do it here or upstairs.
And by that wall can move, you just mean it's not a load-bearing wall?
Yeah.
It would still, it would be a finished wall, and if we need to, you can tear that wall down. It's just not a load-bearing wall.
I, I meant like a.
I know, I know what you were saying. Yep. Like a partition that one or two people could be moving, fluctuating. Yep.
I don't think we're planning on it right now. I mean, 40 people.
Anybody else like to make a comment tonight?
Oh, man, I had something, and then I spaced it.
Going once. Well, thank you very much for your comments. We do have another workshop scheduled for next Monday at 6:30, where we were scheduled to sort of review what we've heard tonight. And I don't know whether we'll have anything back from Ledgewood by then or not.
Not until March 13. So 16, no?
13, 14.
Okay, but, so we'll keep that meeting next Monday. It may end up being a short workshop or something like that, where the board can just get together with, with the team and go on forward with that, and then we'll keep moving on. Want to shout out, thank you to the Friends of Rockport Public Library, who brought the refreshments tonight. Come on up and have some, and have some on your way out the door. And thank you all very much for coming. It was great to see a great turnout tonight. Thank you very much, and good night.